Call the meeting to order. Mr. Woods, would you do the invitation, please?
Heavenly Father, once again, Lord, for coming forward and giving thanks. Father, thank you, Lord, for life and strength. At any time, I'll so far with you, be with the Reed family, Lord, you also a member of her family yesterday, Lord, and be with that family, Lord, Susan Mills. Father, all of the members in this community, Lord, if they go through the ups and downs of trial tribulation, continue, Lord, to keep us first and foremost, and let it continue, Lord, to make one of the kind of better places to live. Father, these are the things that Sunday is this night. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Next, we have a full agenda items. I see we have a proclamation, and where are we putting this on the agenda, Mr.?
What's that?
Propamation?
If you'd like to have a vote on it, you can, but it doesn't necessarily require a vote as a file.
Where do we put this on our agenda?
Well, we had it there for your signature. If you want to present it publicly, you could. It doesn't necessarily have to be voted on.
All right.
Yeah, I'm sorry. We'll put a note on next.
I call for a motion to approve the agenda items as printed unless there are changes.
So moved. A second?
It's been moved and second that we approve the agenda as printed. All in favor, let it be known by raising your right hand. Thank you. Next, we have our public hearing and issuance by the South Carolina Jobs Economic Development Authority of its industrial revenue bonds, series 2018, and one or more series in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $10 million to Provideus Ventures LLC for construction of an approximately 20,000 square foot building to a 50,000 square foot building, existing building on the property located at 166 Industrial Lane in Bennettsville.
Madam Chairman, this is, um, this, uh, this bond issue will provide funding for what was formerly the Carolina AAC project in the county, former county spec building. So this is a good thing. Council approved earlier this year, late last year, incentives for that project that would kick in at a certain investment level. So this is a good sign, and we have company representatives here today. Everything's positive and moving forward. It does have to come through here with the, with this action. That's why it's on your agenda.
All right. Any other questions, comments? We'll close the public hearing. Next, approval of minutes. I have a couple of, I don't know if it's typographical or not, page four, Ms. Bundy. The second paragraph and the last sentence may reference to Mr. Woods contacting the police department. It says in those areas, but I think it will be the city. Because Wallace and Blenheim don't have a police department, and we need to contact maybe the sheriff's department about this concern. I don't know, is that typo?
I think if I'm correct, Mr. Woods said he did talk with the police department.
In Clayo?
Yeah.
In Clayo. All right, then that should be Clayo.
Yes.
Right, then rather than those areas. All right, thank you.
Madam Chairman, I make most will accept the amendment written. That's amended.
Your second?
Second.
It's been moved and second that we accept the minutes with that one amendment. All in favor, let it be known by raising your right hand. Thank you. Oh, business, ordinance 767, approving an agreement by between Marlboro County and the city of Bennettsville for the exchange of services, third reading.
Madam Chairman, this is something we do every year. This year, we did it a little differently. If you'll refer to 4A in your packet, you'll see this agreement. And, you know, there's always a question of, are we making a fair trade, or is there anything we need to look at? And so what we did, county staff did, was go through the items that the county provides to the city and determine, you know, what the value of those are, or what the cost, I should say, not value, is to the county. For the portion that the city provides, we only have their numbers, and they are old. So we, we did some work to try to see where they are now, but we just really focused on what we're providing to try to understand that. And I'll explain it briefly. The first item is to provide use of the detention center for people arrested by the city police. And we determined that was a value of about $553,000. How did we do that? Well, we can track who's in the jail and how long they're in the jail, and we can track how much it cost us to operate the jail and pay the debt back for building the jail, and we can multiply that times a percentage of how much they're using it. So that's where that came from. We did the same thing with 911 dispatch and came up with that $207,000 figure, and they, we allowed a credit back because the phone company charges a certain amount on your bill for 911. So everyone in Bennettsville City Limits that paid that, that credit ought to go towards that. So you see that figure. And so basically, just at that quick glance, or it wasn't that quick, but it's what we came up with, it's a value of about $713,000. Now, the thing, the thing to take away from this is, we can go back and forth about money, you know, all day long, but in the end, if we did not have this agreement, the city would, the county would have to build a fire station or two, and the city would have to build a jail. That's the, to me, that's the core, and a 911 center, but the core of it is our jail, their fire service five miles out. So that's the part of the comparison part. The other thing to note is, there's a paragraph in here about the collection of city taxes by the county. We've done that as a separate agreement before, and we just put it in here just to have it all in one place. That didn't really change. The only thing that did change is, we were approached by the, by the city to see if they put a lien on a piece of property for tearing down a building or that sort of thing, if we would allow that to be collected through the delinquent tax process. And, um, and we, staff is okay with that, and we presented that to you all prior to this. But that's not part of the trade, really. They pay us a dollar a notice, or a dollar a, a bill they turn over for us to handle it. You know, again, I mean, this is something that we've, we've tried to do a couple of times before, and we felt like this time we needed to put a number on our stuff. That doesn't mean that, I mean, I'm still, that's making a staff recommendation that you approve this. I don't think, you know, we need to go that route, but it does let you start to see the value of those things in case we need to look at them in the future. So I can try to answer any questions anybody might have.
How long will the term be that we're gonna work with, for, work with the city with the new program? I know, I think it was going three years at one time, gonna do it like a year at this time?
Right. It's, um, for this that we're asking for tonight, it's one year, but it allows us to approve it by resolution for additional three years, one year at a time. So a year at a time.
Well, you know anything, have you heard anything about the, the city moving, the police department or fire department?
No, I mean, I know they're moving their city hall to the bypass, to the old co-op building. I don't know anything about anything else.
Well, my understanding is that they looking at moving their fire department now from out of the city across the bypass down at the building over there, and also the police department. Now, if they're gonna move, how did that affect us? Or do it affect us at all?
Well, I mean, I don't know that, the only way of moving the fire department would affect us is if it moves it a certain distance away from house, so they have to pay more insurance. I don't know that that's far enough to make that happen. And the police department, I don't know either. So I really don't, I don't see any impact, but I'm not, you know, I can look into it.
Okay, but you don't have any information at all on that?
No, I was, I didn't know anything about it till you, just till you told me.
Okay, but I sort of think that if anything like that gonna take place, I think we should be, at least have some knowledge of it, rather than just, we can't do anything about it, rather than just deciding to move out of the city, and that's really moving out of the city, to the bypass, right? If we're gonna work together, then to me, that's working together, saying, okay, this is what our plan, this is what we looking at. And if we not doing that, then we really not working together. I'm just, so if you can look into that, I totally appreciate it.
Okay, I will, and I'll get our fire coordinator and all to make sure there's no issue or anything there.
Do you have the, um, numbers of the value, what we provide to the city that's over $70,000, and what is the value what the city provides to us? Is there any way to estimate that?
Well, we did, we took, we were able to get copies of the city, uh, the city's budget, and we did the same multiplication out, and it came out, you know, pretty close to, not even, but not enough to jump out at you. But without working with them, we wouldn't be able to get down as deep as we did on our side. So I don't, I don't know that it's the ongoing everyday expenses that are, that are an issue. Those seem to kind of settle out. I think the concern would be is, you know, if this, this were not in place, if we had to build a fire station on us and on them, then they have to build a jail. I mean, quite frankly, I'd rather build two fire stations than one jail.
Any other questions or comments? Entertain a motion to accept this in third reading?
So moved.
It's been moved and, excuse me, it's been moved and second that we approve ordinance 676, third reading of the agreement between the city and the county. All in favor, let it be known by raising your right hand. Thank you. Ordinance 768, approving an agreement by between Marlboro County and Drug Free Coalition, third reading.
That's, you know, as we've discussed the other two readings, it's just a renewal of an agreement for that program. We let the money flow through the county and administer it.
All in favor, entertain a motion to approve third reading.
Madam Chairman, I make most will approve ordinance number 768.
Second.
It's been moved and second that we approve ordinance 768 between the county and the Drug Free Coalition Project. All in favor, let it be known by raising your right hand. Thank you. Ordinance 769, approving an agreement with the School District of Marlboro County for school resource officers for Blenheim and Wallace Schools, third reading.
This is, as you've read twice already, this is the agreement for the schools to reimburse the county for the school resource officers, and I know the sheriff has already put two in place. We have not gotten the agreement back from the school board, so I'll have to push to do that before he can fill the spot seat vacated by moving someone into this. No indication that will be a problem. We did, staff did have, there is a line in here that says, if, excuse me, if the schools want to do more, like if they want to do a two in Clayo, as long as it meets these same terms, that staff will be authorized to do as many, as long as we're getting paid back. I assume that that would probably meet with council approval. So same rules, just, you know, repay us.
All right.
I move we approve ordinance 769.
It's been moved and second that we approve ordinance 769, adding school resource officers for Blenheim and Wallace Schools, which will be added to the agreement with the school board to pay for all of these services.
That's correct.
All in favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you. Ordinance 770, and orders to adopt the annual budget and to make appropriations for Marlboro County for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2018, and ending June 30th, 2019, second reading.
Madam Chairman, you know, as you'll see in your packet, this is, uh, this second reading is to approve the template and the basic rules of the budget. We will have a work session between now and the June meeting where we'll go through every detail of it and present you all the different options. We, you know, our goal, you know, last year, we went through some extra steps. You know, I was new, and I wanted to get a, more handle on what I had to work with and wanted to make sure council understood too what they were working with. Our goal all along has been to create confidence, you know, the public's confidence that we're spending their money wisely, that it's not some bottomless pit of money, that we, a bottomless well of money that we just draw more out of. We, I feel like staff and council and all of us involved have been very mindful of the fact that our citizens in Marlboro County can only afford so much, and we're a poor county, and we need to be very conscious of that. So in, in saying all that, in the last year, we've spent a lot of time trying to gain control of, of what we have and where costs are and how much we've used the reserve. Remember, it was a, a lot, and like 1.1 million dollars. And this past year, our audit came back, and we had only used $100,000 of that, I think I'm right. And so we're, we're moving in that direction. So when we did it this year, we again focused on that and tried to find ways that we could cut costs. You know, and that's kind of unheard of. You look at government budgets, you don't see many government budgets going down. But we've made some progress, and you'll see that at the work session. I'm gonna give you a couple of examples. You know, Mr. Carabo's come on, and he's gone after some things that he, you know, wanted to look at, and some things that I had that I hadn't had a chance to get to. Like, for example, we have three different county departments that have lawn mowing, have grass cutting crews, three departments, with eight lawnmowers. Well, we're working to create one grass mowing thing with, you know, however many lawnmowers they need. We have, you know, it's just redundancy, and we, we don't need to have that. We're looking now to consolidate our two codes enforcement officers. We have an animal control officer, and we have a litter officer. We want to have both of those folks trained to do both of those jobs. So when there's a lot of litter work, they can help each other. When there's animal work, they can help each other. That'll save us money and prevent us from having to hire another type officer like that. We've come to you with the project on the dirt roads, and we, we hope to have that further along where we don't spend county taxpayer dollars to maintain a road on a hunting club that's basically a way to go dump your trash. If that property owner wants to take that road and take it over, then we'll take it out of the county system, and we won't spend that money to do that. And one of the things we're working on right now is a payroll system that'll allow us to have a way to enter in the time sheets and all remotely, so the sheriff's department can enter in there, that sheriff's department. It'll come to us, and we'll save a lot of time. We're spending 40 hours every two weeks chasing time sheets and doing this and doing that, and then a lot more than that at the end of the year doing W2s and all. So we found a system that'll do all that for us that's used in private sector and some governments. So those are things we're trying to do, and you'll, you'll see when we go through the budget that we've cut costs. We've cut money out of, against last year, we've cut costs. The problem is that, no matter how much we cut, something eats it up. So we look at things that we can't control. You know, we have more unfunded state mandates this year, with retirement contribution has gone up again. So if we save 50, $75,000, and they eat that right back up. So we have things like that, health insurance and that. You'll hear that when we meet at the work session. So tonight, we're just asking for a second reading to get us along in the readings, and we can have a work session and go through it, and then have another final reading. So it's two more meetings before you approve budget. And we will have some options there for you to, on different subjects like EMS funding, we've got to look at that, you know, doing things to make sure our employees are fairly paid. You know, as we increase efficiency and ask people to do more, or if somebody leaves and we don't fill their spot, we want to make sure we pay the people there, you know, a fair wage. So that's kind of where we are, and we'd ask that you pass second reading on a good faith that we'll, we'll work it all out in the work session.
All right. Comments or questions? Entertain a motion to approve second reading?
I make a motion to accept the second reading, ordinance 77.
It's been moved and second that we approve the second reading for the budget, ordinance 77. All in favor, let it be known by raising your right hand. I suggest we look at our calendars now, and let's set a date for work session. Let's consider Tuesday, the 22nd.
We were hoping for maybe the next week.
The 29th?
It's Memorial Day week, but either Tuesday or Wednesday.
The 29th is the day after Memorial Day.
That, that was staff's preference, but we're here every day, so we'll.
The 29th is their preference?
Yes, ma'am.
Smile with me.
And if we could do it, you know, as early as we, if y'all can stand to start, then we would want to have a call meeting at 6:00 to, to vote on several things we have that need to come forward.
With 4:00 work?
That would be good, yeah.
4:00 on the 29th?
And we'll, we'll make sure we have, you know, stuff to nibble on and all while we're working.
4:00 on the 29th? Call meeting at 6:00. All right. That's with new phones. Ordinance 771, in orders to approve the capital improvement plan for Marlboro County for the period of fiscal year 2019, 2022, second reading.
That just follows the budget document, so we ask for second reading.
All right.
So moved, Madam Chairman.
It's moved and second that we approve second reading of ordinance 771 for the capital improvement, five-year plan. Here, second? It's been moved and second, all in favor, please let it be known by raising your right hand. Thank you. Ordinance 772, ordering a referendum to determine whether South Carolina Department of Revenue may issue temporary permits to allow for the possession, sale, and consumption of alcoholic liquors by the drink to bona fide nonprofit organizations and business establishments authorized to be licensed for consumption on premise sales to allow for sale beer and wine at permitted off-premise location without regard to the days or the hours of sales. This is a second reading.
No comment, it is what it is.
Yeah.
I move that we accept this ordinance.
It's been moved and second that we approve second reading for ordinance 772. All in favor, please let it be known by raising your right hand. Thank you. Hopefully, we get some tax revenue from this. New business, ordinance 773, in orders authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee in lieu of ad valorem tax and special source revenue credit agreement by between Marlboro County and South Carolina and Project Hobbit to provide for payments of fee in lieu of taxes, authorizing certain infrastructure credits and other related materials. First reading and title only.
If you'll notice, your new business, all but one thing, are expansions of industry in Marlboro County. So, you know, oftentimes, you hear people ask, what are you doing and what, what is gonna come here? These are all expansions of existing industries, so that's a positive thing. This first one is a $20 million expansion. It won't come with a bunch of jobs, but it does mean that that company's viable and the jobs will continue. So we ask for this first reading by title only to start that process down the road to three readings.
All right, thank you. Entertain a motion?
So moved.
It's been moved and second that we approve ordinance 773, first reading and title only for this expansion project. All in favor, let it be known by raising your right hand. Thank you. Resolution 051801, identifying a project to satisfy the requirements of Title 12, Chapter 44 of the South Carolina Code of Laws, so as to allow investment expenditures incurred by a company known to the county as Project Hobbit, its affiliates and related entities to qualify as expenditures eligible for a fee in lieu of taxes agreement with Marlboro County, South Carolina, providing for other related economic development incentives, including special source revenue credits and other matters related thereto.
This is the same project, just another instrument we need to, or ask you guys to pass.
That's right, you did say that. All right. Resolution, entertain a motion? It's been moved and second that we approve Resolution 051801. All in favor, let it be known by raising your right hand. Thank you. Ordinance 774, authorizing, one, the execution and delivery of an infrastructure credit agreement by between Marlboro County, South Carolina, and Project Clay to provide for special source revenue credits, and, two, the inclusion of property to be owned or operated by Project Clay in a joint county industrial park, and, three, other matters related thereto. First reading and title only.
Uh, this is a different project. It's an existing industry that's expanding. It should create a few jobs, five or 10 jobs. The dollar amount's not been set, but it will be $2.5 million or less, and so this is the first reading to get it going, and we'll have those details as we move forward.
All right. It's signs of growth.
Yes.
It's a good thing.
I make most will set ordinance number 774.
Second.
It's been moved and second that we approve ordinance 774, first reading and title only. All in favor, let it be known by raising your right hand. Thank you. Resolution 051802, a resolution in support of the issuance by the South Carolina Jobs Economic Development Authority of its industrial revenue bonds, series 2018 pursuant to the provision of Title 41, Chapter 43 of the Code of Laws of South Carolina, 1976, as amended in the aggregate principal amount of not exceeding $10 million.
This is the companion legislation for the public hearing you had earlier.
Right. Okay, great. Thank you. Entertain a motion?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and second that we approve Resolution 051802. All in favor, let it be known by raising your right hand. Thank you. An E, approve to change the date of the June county council meeting to June 19th, due to the June 11th being the date of the primary election. The 11th is a Monday, so that really should be 12? Yeah, that's what I thought, yeah. All right.
Yes.
Yeah. The primary election's on the 12th. Yeah. It's the 19th, yes. Any problems? All right.
So moved.
Need a vote? It's been moved and second that we move our meeting to the date of June 19th to accommodate the primary election on the 12th. All in favor, let it be known by raising your right hand. Thank you. We have two bids to consider, and there have been some modifications since the packet went out.
I'll let Mr. Carabo explain.
Mr. Carabo, please. I think you gave us something on our desk.
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
Counsel papers. Basically, we, uh, we bid the canopy for the library.
Yes.
We had specs done by Mayberry and Associates, so we could match the building that's there now, the tin roof. So we had that bid, and it came in, it exceeded what we, what we thought it was gonna be. It came in at $78,000. So we only had one bid, so we went back to the bidder and asked him to bid not putting the brick lattice on the side, and it came back in at $55,300. So we can, we can always go back at any point in time and, and put the brick, the masonry work back, yeah. So it's $55,300, and we recommend that we accept the bid.
Right. I'm glad that you were able to work this out, because this was really needed, because their skin, they call it on that, on the bookmobile, is fragile. So thank you so much for the, doing due diligence to get this done.
Well, it's, it's gonna match too, so we made sure that that was in specs, and we have a reputable bidder.
Thank you.
The wall, the parking lot over here beside the administration office, we did the same thing basically. We did, Mayberry and Associates gave us, uh, gave us our specs, and it came in way, way too much. It was, uh, came in, the low bid was 106,800. We were thinking it was gonna be, you know, 50 grand or so. So we went back to both the bidders, because we had two bidders this time, so we called them in the room, sat them down, got them both to rebid, just doing the main wall up here, that's a, that's a hazard. So we got them to rebid it, and the lowest bid came back in at 49,300. So at this time, we're just gonna do the one wall, and then we can do the other two, you know, when we deem necessary. And staff, we, we recommend that we accept 49,300 bid.
All right. Can we vote on these as one, Mr.? Please, sir. All right. The pleasure, counsel. Accept both bids.
Staff recommendations, yes, ma'am.
Your motion?
So moved.
It's been moved and second that we accept the staff recommendations for the bids for the library canopy and for the administration wall. All in favor, let it be known by raising your right hand. So moved, thank you. Are there any appointments to boards and commissions?
I think there's a couple, maybe in your packet, for our in-house grievance committee.
That's right, I did see that.
Yeah. So that's Beverly, the Teever, Channing Covenant, and maybe Baldwin. This is just an in-house committee we keep, and council appoints employees to it.
All in favor of the appointments as outlined by Mr. Moore? Your motion?
So moved.
All right. It's been moved and second that we accept the appointments for the grievance committee as outlined in our packets. All in favor, let it be known by raising your right hand. Thank you. Ms. Moore, Mrs. Moore, your financial report, please.
Madam Chair, members of council, for the month of March, excuse me, for the month of April, expenditures were approximately 6% under budget for this point in the fiscal year, although- Although expenses have been higher than revenues for some months this year, the revenue collections in peak months have compensated for the differences. Per the Association of Counties website, the House debated the Senate version of the budget again this week. The chairman introduced a new amendment which would mostly just amend the Senate version back to the House version. They did not suggest any increase to the local government fund, so it would be funded at the same level as last year, which was two-hundred-twenty-two million. Both the House and Senate did fund another one percent retirement credit as they did this past year, but counties will still be required to increase their employer contribution one percent for the fiscal year eighteen nineteen as mandated. Are there any questions?
Thank you.
Madam Chairman, for administrative report tonight, have a, start off with the employee service anniversaries like we always do, and we have a number of them this year, some with pretty big numbers. Teresa Burgess is sixteen years, Chris Byers is fourteen years, Arthur Hamer twenty years, Brad Levine are five years, Curtis McDuffie twenty-one years, Ainsley Moore five years, Brian Oxendine five years, and Sharon Thomas thirteen years. So we had some pretty, uh, big numbers there this time. As far as upcoming events, we have the third in our series of opening new fire stations. So this is the third fire station we have opened in for this, I think, since this, the start of this year, and we're excited about that. This, uh, you know, is very much a result of the work we did on the ISO plan and all, and the fire departments and everybody working together. This one's a Newtonville Fire Station, which is in the Brightsville community, and, um, and we're looking forward to that. So we ask that you all come out, we'll make sure and send a reminder out for that one. It's on May twenty-second at four P.M. As far as economic development, you know, as you saw on the agenda, it's been a pretty busy month. We've had three expansions on the agenda, so we've been working, staff's been working to get all that together, along with other things. They represent about thirty million dollars. There's not a lot of job creation, but, you know, there's a lot of job preservation or retention, and that's very important as well. It'll also result in some tax revenue, which, uh, we desperately need. We are very, very close to an announcement regarding the Baldor plant in Clio. Uh, worked on that this afternoon, um, trying to figure out how to send eight-ten mega- eight-ten megabyte emails. Have you ever tried to do that? That doesn't work. But we figured it out. It's a good thing, it'll employ some people, you know, it'll be new jobs that replace jobs that were there before, but it's been, they've been gone a while, so, uh, you know, that's, that's exciting, and, you know, want to thank the council people that represented that area, Mr. Woods primarily, and Mr. Blackman, part of that, down that area, you know, for their help and support whenever I had a question or needed something there, so we appreciate you all with that. Economic development's a team sport, and, uh, with, as far as getting these things passed and figuring out what we need to do on council, so I appreciate that. As far as administrative report, you know, we've, we've had really good coverage, and you've heard a lot about the, uh, the cleanup day, but, you know, it was, since our last meeting, we had a cleanup day, and, uh, I don't know what else to say besides what, you know, it just really was a pleasant surprise to have that many people come out. A lot of this, a lot of participation with people that came out because they really wanted to do it. There was no, you know, effort to make sure we got a bunch of people out or anything like that. We just organized it, and it just exploded. So we're really excited about that, and we're going to do another one in the fall. We picked up about twenty-four tons of trash, and, um, like I said, we'll have something again in the fall when it cools off and the snakes quit crawling, maybe. The tire amnesty month is also a big success. We collected about, well, we collected, I'm told, exactly four thousand and forty-six tires from people. Then we, we're collecting four thousand plus more tires from businesses. Now, if you remember, the businesses have to pay us, but they're paying us what it costs. I tell you, it's, um, that part of it was really surprising to us. Folks that have let tires build up and kind of, you know, don't know what to do, we've given them a way to get rid of them, and that helps the people that live next door that mosquitoes aren't breeding, snakes aren't breeding, and so, um, that doesn't cost us anything, so I've told staff it's okay to keep doing that. If somebody comes to us and they want to pay, you know, we'll pass that along to them. That's something we can do. And we've had a, we've got one place that has, you know, we think about three, three thousand tires in one place. You know, they've already hauled in forty-five, four truckloads, three or four truckloads? But what we do is, the people that pick them up from us bring us a truck, an empty, an empty, uh, trailer, and we just send it straight to the people, and then they fill it up and they pick it up, so it works out real well. What we'll do too is in the fall, we'll make sure we budget, we have this in the budget, and we'll do another one in the fall around the cleanup day, again. But if you, if you know anybody who's accumulated some and they need to get rid of, and tell them, you know, don't, then I'll get in trouble. Call us, we'll work it out, we'll let them get the tires gone. Also, we had, uh, with Blues Landing, the boat landing near Oka River, last fall, uh, Councilman Blackman and I talked about need to improve, make some improvements down there. Problem had been over the years that there was a little bit of discussion about who owned it, and, you know, I think some county folk, county staff folks thought the state owned it, and the other people thought we owned it. Well, we were able to find out, we own it. So y'all know by now, if we own it, we need to take care of it, and that's kind of how I want to operate. So we've met down there, uh, Sheriff came down, um, and we had some people that lived down there. Jerry Doughty was kind of the one that was, was involved in it too, and we looked at what we needed to do. Since that time, we've gone down there, public works, just cut a lot of trees back, they cleaned the landing out, and we were scraping the sides, beside the landing back, and they're going to put some, uh, sediment cloth down, you know, which is like weed cloth in your flowerbeds, and then put ripper out, rock, big rocks, so it doesn't keep washing down in there. But, you know, every time we get ready to do something, the river came up, so we had to wait for the river to go back down, but, um, you know, it's, it's, it's a, it's a thing people use, and we need to make sure it's safe and people can come in and out of it. The final thing I had was, we had our first meeting of the Park Recreation Board that y'all appointed some new people to, and it was a good meeting, you know, well-attended, and, um, we worked, we, we started work on a survey that we can send out to everybody who's either been a player, or a parent, or a sponsor, or a coach, or an official, and it's one of these electronic surveys, the, the company's called Survey Monkey, and you, it's like you might get in your email where you go to a hotel or something. So we've got that about ready to launch, and it'll, it should go out next week. And so, um, once we get, uh, we, we're going to go about it two ways. We're going to send it out to people whose contact information we have, and then we're going to have it another way. If you just want to do it, we'll tell you where to go to do it. We'll probably separate the answers because we want to, folks that have identified themselves and we know participated, you know, sometimes that's better information, but we want to hear from everybody. But it'll have things on there like, you know, um, you know, how well did we tell you what the schedule was, or did you, if you were a sponsor, did you think the uniforms were a good value? What can we do, what we, what are we doing that works well? What can we do that we need improvement on? What other programs can we offer? Just that sort of things that you might imagine. So that's, uh, that, along with the budgets and sort of other things we want to talk about, uh, um, we're busy, we're all busy and trying to keep things going. Any questions I can answer? Go ahead. Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. There are no, um, citizens requesting time to speak to us, so we'll go to our councilmen. Uh, we'll start with you, Mr. Odom.
Uh, thanks for that, I, I, I'm too younger, I'm a traffic accident, um, Sunday morning, but they need our prayers, and they're going to have a prayer bid, I think, uh, Main Street and the whole, about seven o'clock.
Tonight?
I didn't act like that.
Tonight? Tonight?
Tonight. And it was, um, I think it was actually five people in the car, and two of the girls were severely hurt, and I think that three people were not hurt, and, uh, it was just, uh, both of them, I think, were in ninth grade, and they just did a lot of prayers and, um, hoping to hold it even, and just hope that they'll, they'll pull through. Like I said, still hearing good great comments about cleanup, about areas we did get, and still hearing people complain about why we didn't get certain, certain raises, but here to four hours, we can't do it all, but I think overall, I think if I split, you know, with the amount of, uh, work we did do that day, plus the participation, uh, that we had.
I think, uh, on the cleanup deal, uh, my crew, they, they want to stay all day. About three o'clock, it was two, I said, uh, I got there too. It was already, you know, about three o'clock, you know, but they worked about thirty more minutes, and, uh, matter of fact, had so much, he put some in my dumpster, you know, but, uh, we, we had a good day, and, um, they actually enjoyed it. I don't know if everybody got into working, and, uh, everybody got to talking, and it ended up being a good, good thing, and, um, you know, everybody just pulled together, and it, it really made us feel good that that many people came out, and, uh, and, you know, you don't see that every time, so that, that shows that people do care. The other thing is, I appreciate that, uh, staff and Ron, uh, administrator, Doug, Mr. Carabo, uh, helping with it. All the things you're helping with is for the land, and then the other props, dirt roads, trying to get this stuff where we can get the roads fixed we need, the ones we don't, let's don't, just quit spending that money on that, you know, get these people right, but, uh, I just appreciate all the efforts and the changes that's been taking place in the last couple of years. That's all.
One of the things I'd like to look into is at our workshop that we got coming up, some of the committees that we have, some of the backdoor deals that have been being made that affect the citizens of the county, and remember the cities in the county also. So at that workshop, I think we need to put on our agenda to see to it that we open that up. I could go into further details, but it might be better just to wait until our workshop committee to, um, look into some of the things that's been going on, um, in the county and the city that I don't think is right, and that we need to really look into. So I like for that to go onto agenda, so that I'll meet him with him to have time for that. I'm sorry I missed the cleanup, but, you know, so be. Better, Jason.
Glad, Mr. Glad is feeling better. Uh, he was, I don't know whether there for a while, so, uh, like I said, he was, uh, Glad is feeling a little better this council meeting than he were the last one.
Oh, yeah.
And so, uh, but just reiterate, uh, you know, the, the cleanup day was a success, uh, but what did bother me is, we spent all that time Saturday, and when you go through there on a Monday morning, people was throwing out couches, people was throwing out bottles in the same areas that we cleaned up, and so, but our citizens are taking pride in it, they're looking for license plates. If they see it, uh, we, we ask them to call. I mean, you know, they're, for eight-hundred-and-fifty people to take pride in it, uh, you know, I've heard some complaints about, uh, not the work that we didn't do, that it weren't, you know, but it was just the way citizens are still, uh, throwing trash out, and I said, I promise you it was not those eight-hundred-and-fifty, it was cleaning up, because it did get warm out there that day, but, uh, but we did want to thank everybody for doing it, and, uh, the tire, the tire program, uh, you know, I, I did, I'm glad to hear we, uh, gonna, you know, have another one. I was going to ask them if we could maybe extend it, and, you know, or, or go one time a month and get it out there for one time a month, uh, you know, I, I know there's some people that really, when they found out about it, it was turned to the latter part, but I think they, uh, I've heard some rave reviews about the, the tire program, so if there's a way to do it, and, and we can, uh, see if we can check into another date or between now and the fall to, to keep that going. I think if our momentum's going good and people's taking pride, and, you know, if, if we don't, I mean, if we got in our budget and can make it happen somewhere or another, it would be a, I think, a, a, a good step, continued in the right direction. So I thank our Sheriff's Department Chief Deputy for here, and, uh, I want to thank our staff for everything that they've been doing, and so, uh, that's it.
Thank you.
Well, I got a real bad headache, so I'm not going to say but a few things. I enjoyed the cleanup, and I enjoyed working with all the people that came out to help, and I'm looking forward for the, to the next time. The only thing about the crew that I had, there was young folks, and I had to stop quite a few times to rest up against the poles or anything, but they wore me out, but I really enjoyed it, really enjoyed it, and I'm looking forward to the next one.
The, um, on the Clio area, and I said, the Humane Society, I think they want to do the, um, food, I think they did an excellent job, uh, well organized, um, and in, like, um, Steve said, we had, like, people gathered together, and people, you know, they could share ideas with you, and in Clio area, they, we were at a certain part, a part of Clio, and the landowner came, and, you know, we kind of talked to him about maybe donating that part of the, um, of the city, um, of town, Clio, to the, to the towns, so we were going to do some, uh, a park in, in the city, so, you know, we put that seed, we planted that seed, and, and hopefully, uh, it'll take root, but, um, so many people have ideas of, of how they can do this, how, you know, how we can do that, so it gave me as a council member to sit back and listen, um, well, because when you talk freely and with no pressure or no agenda, people really can show their, their true colors of what they, you know, want to do and so forth, and as some may know that, uh, Clio have a lot of new residents from, uh, up north that, uh, have moved into our little, have moved into our little town, and they got, of course, you know, big ideas, uh, but, you know, I told them, hey, ideas are great, you know, we just got to take our time and, and put it in place and go by it the right way. You can't just jump in and say, I'll take your stuff from, from people. As for other areas, you know, this time next month, in June, uh, we hope this, this, uh, team we have here will be together for more years. Uh, Steve and I, we got a battle, um, going on, but, you know, um, we, we got family, y'all got family and friends and, and eight and seven, and if y'all want us back, you know, Steve and I, I guess I go speak for team, love for Steve. Y'all, y'all talking to people down in, you know, the churches and the neighbors and say, look, I'm not in your district, but my friend will be your vote. You know, and I, and I say, you know, we, uh, we are, this is a, a good team. Um, I think, um, throughout the, uh, agencies, uh, with Marlboro County know that when the county council come together, our meeting is efficient, it, um, well thought out, well attended, and it's, you know, and when we do disagree, we go behind that wall right there, and we fight it out, then we call Sheriff Lemon to come in and, and explain, then we come back in, and we all smile, so, you know, which is good, it's, it's okay to disagree. Uh, but anyway, um, I think, um, you know, uh, we hope that everything will go according for Steve and myself, but, um, you know, just continue to pray for us, and we can pray for each other, and as, as, as our lives evolve, you know, just keep everybody in prayer.
All right. Thank you. All right. Yeah, I'm, I'm very pleased by the report from, uh, the Finance Department and Administrator working on the budget, increasing efficiency and, uh, not reducing the services, so it's always good when we can do more with less, unfortunately. Also, glad to hear about the good report from the Recreation Committee that was created because that's been something that we've been wanting to, um, to be proactive on, and now that we have a group that's working towards that. Mr. Glad, we're glad you're well and back. It's always good to see our, uh, Sheriff Department here. Thank you, you always come to the meetings, we, I appreciate that. And of course, everybody's talked about the countywide cleanup, the cities having a cleanup. I guess they thought they had, we had a good thing, they're going to clean up Menaceville, so some of our districts are part of the city, and that's on the nineteenth. If you want to come help us out, you're always welcome. Mr. Odom, um, the first thing Monday morning, I had a student come run to my classroom and tell me about, um, the accident, and it really shook me to my core because one of the students, Lauren Privet, is in my class, um, sweet young lady, excellent student, and, um, it just reverberated through the school because there wasn't much press about it, people didn't know, and, um, everybody's praying for their, um, swift recovery. It's very tragic, but, um, we're just grateful that they got the medical service in time, and we're praying for their recovery, so thank you for letting me know about the, um, the prayer version tonight. Another good meeting, thank you all so much, and we'll see you on the twenty-ninth. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.